Folks. Uh oh, can you hear me?
Yes, Liz, hello.
You ready?
Hey. Um, I'm out in the mountains. And I don't think, I don't have very good service, so I'm gonna go off video, but I just wanted to say hi.
Thank you. Hello, greetings. I hope it's wonderful in the mountains, wherever you are.
Oh, yes, it is.
Glad you're here. All right. I call the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five hybrid meeting to order at one oh-two P M. For an equitable experience, please announce your name before commenting. This helps the blind and visually impaired know who's speaking. We'll begin with roll call and encourage each member to provide a self-description. I'll go ahead and go first. My name is Liz Woodburn. I'm a white blond-haired, blue-eyed woman. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm wearing a cream top with a bow close to my neck.
Oh, I'll go next. This is Carl Burnett here in Council Chambers. I am a white guy with a beard and a green hat and a black shirt and glasses, and I use he/him pronouns.
Hi, this is Amanda Hamer. I am in Council Chambers, wearing a tank dress and shoulder-length brown hair that's pulled back halfway. I'm a white, well, then I go by she/her pronouns.
Hi, this is Stephanie Upzman here in Council Chambers. I'm a white woman with long brown curly hair, brown eyes, she/her pronouns, and I'm wearing a blue top.
Ian Isaacson in Council Chambers, white male, short hair, sunglasses on top of my head.
This is John Halen. I am online. I am a baldy white male who, due to lighting, comes off as kind of pinkish. I am he/him pronouns.
This is Aaron Rivers. I'm attending online. I'm a white male with short, dark hair. I have headphones and a purple shirt on.
This is Whitney Bennett. I'm attending online. She/her pronouns. I'm a white female with blond hair that's tied up, and I'm wearing a black T-shirt.
I am Liz Deether Martin. I am attending online with my video off. I'm in a remote location without very good cell service, so I'm just trying to uh make this, not make it terrible quality. I use she/her pronouns. And I guess you don't really care what I look like.
I'm Alyssa McCray. I'm joining remote, sorry, white female, blond hair, blue-eyed. Yeah.
Is that everybody online?
No, I guess I'm left. My name is Julie DeVoe. I'm the program coordinator for the City of Bend. I am a white woman with brown hair. I do not have my camera on. I have to leave the meeting a little early today, but I work with Ariel in the Licensing Division. Long dark, long, dark brown hair. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Julie. All right, without further ado, we will move on to the land acknowledgement. Do I have a volunteer to read the land acknowledgement?
Sure, I will.
Thank you, Carl.
We'd like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River, is the original homeland of the Confederate tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederate tribes ceded this land in Treaty of eighteen-fifty-five while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wanalama Warm Springs, Wasco or Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran north through this region to the great Saliva Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Thank you for that. All right, let's move to the approval of the draft minutes from May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any corrections? All right, doesn't sound like there's any corrections. Do I have a motion to approve the May twenty-second minutes?
This is Stephanie. I'll move to approve the May twenty-second minutes.
Thank you, Stephanie.
This is Deanna L. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Looks like unanimous approval. Motion carries. To approve those minutes. Okay. Next segment is public comment. Limit public comment to two minutes per individual. Is there anybody online?
No, there's not.
And no one in the lobby?
Nope.
All right. Just as a reminder. Just as a reminder, the public comment section will not reopen due to time constraints. And we will just continue and follow the agenda as outlined. Should there be any individuals online or that come into the lobby who wish to have a public comment, we'll direct those individuals to city staff. All right, we can go ahead and move on to the COBAC work plan updates. We have welcoming week, COBAC event discussion. Cassandra, do you have any thoughts on this slide?
Absolutely. Thanks, Liz. Hello, COBAC members. I am just putting this out there for COBAC robust discussion, if you will, but just the offer of whether or not to gauge two things. If COBAC is interested in being a part of welcoming week in some capacity, and we know historically COBAC has been wonderful supporters, attendees, hosts to previous welcoming weeks historically. And then two, if there is interest to gauge what kind of activity are you all interested in potentially participating in, hosting, or collaborating with other city, either groups or pre-existing proposed events? So there's two, two areas for you to contemplate. One, whether you'd like to participate, and then the second, if so, what it would be. Keep in mind that I do have those other two things on this slide. We do have City Fest that we don't have the date yet confirmed. One that's going to occur, but we know theoretically, I think that it's going to be happening late August. And that could be something like we did last year where COBAC is in attendance, supporting the event, raising awareness about the committee and the work that you all do in your work plan. So that's something that we do have probably scheduled, and I'll have a little bit more detail obviously for you as soon as that becomes available. And then also, I know that a group of our other subgroup from our previous work plan had been working diligently on trauma-informed training for city staff. And that's kind of migrated to a look of a lunch and learn. So those are the two confirmed, albeit without dates, events that we have for the rest of the year. So with that contemplation, it kind of helps to gauge. Those are the two things on the calendar. Are you also interested in joining or being a part of welcoming week? So that's the contemplation, what's on the table in front of you. And if you are, I just want to shout out to Whitney. This has been kind of rattling around in my mind. But one of the amazing, like such a cool benefit from the walk and roll really was the feedback received from so many of the groups, the nonprofits, the organizations, saying, hey, it's so great just to be in space together and have this chance to be together organically. What would it look like potentially to have another similar accessibility mixer that maybe isn't really guided towards a walk and roll, but really is just talking providers, talking to providers, talking about advocacy, talking about challenges that we mutually face in community around accessibility initiatives? There's all sorts of things. So it can be anything. Carte blanche, the floor is yours for contemplation on those two questions. And I'm happy to clarify if this has not been clear at all. So, thank you.
This is Liz Woodburn. Cassandra, I did have a question about City Fest as it's projected to be in late August. Oh, louder, sorry. Problem with my volume. I had questions about City Fest as it is projected to be in late August. Will that be prior to our next COBAC meeting? Because we have the break in July. Or will it be after our meeting? So we have a little bit of time to kind of gather our bearings.
Great question, and I don't know. I do believe that it's potential. I've heard a date floated that could be prior to the August meeting. And if that's the case, I think last year, the ask of COBAC members was pretty simple streamlined. People were either able to attend or not. I know we got some wonderful pictures of Amanda Hamer in our booth representing. So I think that it could just be as simple as people being present in different times volunteering slots. And I could send that out via email, but I would let you know as soon as I have a date solidified. But there is the potential, and I'm so glad you brought that up. Chair Woodburn, that potentially we may not know the date prior to the actual August COBAC meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions about welcoming week or interest in a particular, particular event during that time?
This is Amanda Hamer. I would love to, I think the, like, the accessibility mixer is super cool and would, I think that'd be really great to do. And I see Wendy has her hand up too, but I think for that welcoming week, to be able to do something collaboratively with, similarly to what we did with Walk and Roll. And maybe too with the Human Rights Commission. I don't know, something, some really accessibility, but anyway, I think that's a great idea, and I would love to do something like that. And I think we should participate in welcoming week, whatever we do.
Whitney?
Yeah, this is Whitney Bennett. I was similarly, I enjoyed the welcoming week that we got involved in the first time where, well, for that one where the Community Options was there, because there was like a set space where there was, SREC was there, and there was a few different entities able to kind of like do that gathering and connecting. And then also, it's very visible in where that specific one is at the Commons. So I would definitely be interested in being a part of something, whether it's a mixer or a panel conversation during that welcoming week. Just, I think the one, my one question with welcoming week, sometimes the planning takes a really long time. And so the sooner that we can like land on a date and carve that out, because it's for, for some in the fall, it's kind of a really busy, it's like a conference season and a lot of going on. So the sooner we can get like what would be a good COBAC commitment, what date, then the better.
This is Liz Woodburn. Any other thoughts or concerns? Okay, it sounds like Cassandra, we are interested in all events in whatever capacity that we can show up as, which is really cool. So thank you for everybody who show up to those events and are present. So I, I think do we need a motion to?
Whitney, did you have something to add?
Sorry, this is, yeah, this is Whitney. I have one more question, I think, because, because we have trauma-informed lunch and learn on there, and it's become a lunch and learn. Is this something that we would like, the COBAC would support the event happening, or it's just something that's kind of on the work plan? Or that we would attend so that we know what kind of conflicts are additional?
Yeah, Whitney, this is Cassandra. So you're speaking about the lunch and learn specifically? It would be, so it's COBAC, I would say, led insofar as like we might have a facility or come in that COBAC elects or finds, and that we've had a few members in contact with folks who are trauma-informed specifically in Oregon that might be able to lead it. But COBAC members would be absolutely encouraged to attend, help support, facilitate, put it on, be present while City of Bend staff are engaging in it. Yeah, so.
Okay.
However, however, little or much, somebody wants to be part of it, the better, so.
This is Liz Woodburn again. Cassandra, do we need to have a motion put forward in terms of the events that we want to participate in for welcoming week?
Yeah, great question, Liz. I think if, if we could just gauge some sort of interest, I think, from members, whether or not not all, right, this is part of a work plan in many events that we've had historically, not all members attend or are part of the planning. So maybe it's more of just identifying who specifically might be interested in being a part of it, and I could send out invitation to have a deeper conversation about what that might look like and kind of the feasibility that would give me an idea too about how much work would go into planning. And if, if it's a small group and we don't have a lot of capacity, maybe that looks more like COBAC supporting another event that's being taken, taking place, or another team that's kind of leading it, but we would be in a more voluntary role. So maybe just gauging interest from COBAC members, and I, I'll definitely reach out to our members who are absent today as well.
All right, that sounds good. I know that I would like to be a part of at least one of those events, if not all of them, depending on my capacity. Okay, so do we want to talk more about the trauma-informed lunch and learn?
This is Stephanie. So as the chair of the, I don't even remember what the name, creating a culture of accessibility in the City of Bend, there was, there was two committees that were so similarly worded, so we as a group were the ones that brought forward the trauma-informed care or trainings as kind of a best practices for City of Bend employees to utilize. And what I can do is reach out. So fall, I'm assuming we're, we're looking at either the September or October dates or day months to have that. So what I would need to do is reach out to the person, and I don't remember what her name, do you remember what her name is? She just sent out an email. She's got additional training options available, so I'm on her email blast. But I can go through, reach out to her, and find out what her availability is and what what the expense would be for her to present at a lunch and learn. And those lunch and learns are an hour and a half.
Typically, the presentation portion can sometimes be up to an hour, and then occasionally we'll have time that's not recorded for about thirty minutes subsequent, where city staff can ask questions, but nothing's on record. So maybe sixty to ninety minutes.
Okay, perfect.
Jill Bauer.
Jill Bauer, thank you. I was, I was gonna say Jan. It was Janie. So I can reach out to her. Do you happen to know the specific dates of the September, October lunch and learns?
No, Stephanie. So there would be some flexibility, and I think some of the kind of the puzzle pieces we plug in may depend on if a lot of people are interested in participating in welcoming week and knowing that's from the twelfth to the twenty-first. Maybe we do bump it to October just for a little bit of spacing between events. So, but we have flexibility.
Okay, I'll reach out to her and find out what her availability is and get kind of work out some of those details on, on cost, and then report back. I'll send you an email. Would that be best?
That sounds wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Cool. Any other questions about the lunch and learn? Well, that sounds good to me. Okay. Let's go ahead and close up that agenda item and move on to the COBAC roundtable.
Liz, mention your name before your comment.
Carl.
Hi, this is Carl. Let's see. Had a chance a couple of weeks ago to preview the new kayak and swim access at Miller's Landing, which Ian was instrumental in making happen. My understanding, that's supposed to open any day now, right?
Days, yeah.
Yeah.
Within days, I don't know how many, or yeah, but yeah.
A, a few of us got a special sneak preview of that, and what an incredible facility we have built there along the river, kind of first of its kind in the world in some ways, some of the features that it has for allowing all kinds of people with all kinds of different bodies and different mobility devices to enjoy one of the greatest amenities that we have in the city, running right through the middle of our town, the Deschutes River. Really looking forward to jumping in there when it's at its hottest this summer and paddling around at all times of year. And I've struggled with finding a way to get in and out of the river easily in my wheelchair. And this is just such an incredible solution for it. So, so excited and so grateful. On a different note, I also wanted to mention that I rode the bus here today to the meeting, rode the bus downtown, which I don't normally do, and it was a, it was a nice experience. It was a little bit. I, it's been a while since I rode it, and I forgot, and then what a kind of hassle it is if you're in a wheelchair to be strapped down in the bus and how long that takes and how few options we have on our buses. I've, I've been on other bus systems in other cities where they've got that process down a lot smoother, and it takes a lot less time. So I don't know, that was just a, just a thought and a reaction that I thought I would share.
This is Amanda. Carl, was that, how was the, was the ride itself? Like, was it?
It was fine, yeah.
Once you were like locked in.
Yeah, yeah, it was fine. It was, it was pretty smooth, and it was not very crowded, but yeah, it's a big contrast from a place like London where it, the experience is almost like getting on and off a train. You don't have to interact with any driver. There's no tie-downs. There's just safe places with lots of grab bars for you to park your chair. And it's, you're kind of on your own, whatever you need to do to secure yourself as, as the bus drives around at a pretty low speed through a city, you know? Different experience.
So what is it like? Do you, again, this is Amanda, is it, do you, do you have to have assistance from the bus driver to get locked in?
Yeah, he has to park the bus, deploy the ramp, let me get on, get out of his, out of the seat, go out the door, walk around the bus, walk up the ramp, go on this particular bus at least, which is one of the shorter buses, to a Velcro pouch that has the four Q-string tie-down devices in it, get them out, bend over, screw them down into the floor, attach each of them to my chair, walk back out of the bus, get back in the seat, fold the ramp back up, and then that whole process in reverse, when I get off, it takes at least five minutes, which I could imagine if, you know, we were waiting around in heavy traffic for, you know, people trying to get around the bus, it would be not ideal.
Right, I feel like that also impacts the timing, right, of?
Yeah, yeah.
There, the whole system.
I think it's different with the bigger buses, but there's still an interaction that has to happen with the bus driver. I also know that in one place I've lived in the past, Denver, there was a lawsuit brought by citizens with disabilities against the transit agency saying we should be allowed to secure or not secure our chairs and mobility devices in the way that works best for us. And so I had the option of being like, nope, I'm good. I'm just gonna put my brakes on, hold on to this grab bar, and I'll be fine. But I don't have that option here.
That's good feedback, right, for C E T? Thank you, Carl, for sharing with us the update of, of the new river access, which is super exciting. And your experience riding C E T today, that's pretty enlightening. And segues nicely into some of the next items that we have on the agenda. First, before we close out the COBAC roundtable, I just wanted to direct you to an email that I sent to Cassandra that was sent out to all of you about some options for training. Whether you're, you take interest or, you know, just like doing trainings like me, who's weird. But Self Advocacy Resource and Technical Assistance Center has some pretty interesting trainings about plain language and accessible forms, which kind of tags along with last month's presentation about language accessibility. So if you want to learn more and get into weeds of that, that resource has some great opportunities. And then also Disabilities Rights of Oregon on July eighth will be doing a series of web celebrations for the thirty-fifth anniversary of ADA. So check those out if you're interested. And I will ask if there's any more roundtables, roundtable comments? If you want to share something exciting that's happened or will be happening?
Or just an experience that you've had or anything, really?
Yeah, this is John Halen. We're getting really close to opening our Central Oregon Tool Library. We've signed a financial sponsorship agreement with Habitat for Humanity, so that saves us from having to register as our own nonprofit. We'll be under their insurance. We're working on the website currently. We're going to have a space at Habitat Restore on Third Street. And one thing I'm excited about is possibly getting electric cargo bikes and being able to deliver tools to people who might be mobility impaired and can't make it down to the Restore. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's currently what I'm working on. It's pretty great.
This is Amanda. John, that is so cool. I don't remember hearing about this. That's rad. Nice job.
Yeah, this is Carl. Congrats on getting so much stuff done. I'm always amazed.
I never sleep.
Agreed, agreed. I'm really excited about the Tool Library. This is Liz Deether Martin. And yeah, good job.
This is Liz Woodburn. Thank you so much, John. I think that'll be a tremendous resource for our community and for people to be able to do things around their home and to build things. And I can just think of many projects that I might even myself use the resource for. So thank you for doing that. Quick question. Will the library just be for individuals who live in Bend or Deschutes County? How will that work?
We haven't quite figured that out yet. We're still working on the kinks, but one thing we're determined to do is not turn away anyone for lack of payment. That also means we're not going to be doing background checks for financial, you know, what their income level is depending on the membership level. We do, I mean, pie in the sky. Hopefully, we'll have electronic lockers in places like Sisters or Le Pine, so that people can check out tools through their phone or online or call, give us a call. And then they can go to those lockers and check out the tools. But even if you are houseless, you will be able to get a tool. We're not gonna really check addresses too much. It's not gonna be a requirement.
Wow, incredible. Thank you so much. All right, without further ado, let's move into the Accessibility and Equity Manager update. Cassandra?
Thanks, Liz. Those are some really great updates. Thank you all for sharing that roundtable. A lot of awesome things. Just a few things on my end, just to reiterate what Liz has shared previously. It is the upcoming thirty-fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act on July twenty-sixth of this year. It is a Saturday, and obviously COBAC is not meeting during this upcoming month. But there is a really great resource that I always utilize and look into. It's adaanniversary.com. And they have entire toolkits, and they link to a lot of great training, some of which Liz cited and were shared in the email that she provided. But just have a lot of really cool things that you can bring to your own workplace, you can bring to your community. But just ways to really think about the ADA and the way it impacts us and the importance of it, especially as so many elements of it, including subsequent and previous civil rights legislation of Section five oh four are tremendously under attack at the moment. So it's important to, to think about and to have that moment to, to really contemplate. So it's important to, to think about and to have that moment to, to really contemplate all of the ways that the ADA, um, creates that floor for us, right? And we're always trying to improve and, and create higher, uh, levels of compliance and more accessibility in all spaces. So something to contemplate. Um, as, uh, Liz also shared out, the Disability Rights Oregon Advocacy, um, that link takes you to different, um, types of advocacy that you can, um, look into on, on your time, including, um, uh, Medicaid, uh, petitions that are happening right now, which, um, truly significantly disproportionately impact individuals with disabilities. So something to look into. Um, Melissa Camagna, I'll be forwarding this email, has also shared with us a Disability Forward Housing Future Summit that's gonna be taking place in San Francisco in November. Um, so if any of you happen to find yourself there or are interested in the topic and want to take yourselves there in November, I will, um, share the information. I don't believe that there's a virtual attendance option at this point, but maybe that is something that may change. So we'll forward that to you. And with that, um, I hope that you all have a very wonderful, well-deserved, restful, um, uh, July break. Thank you. We're all so grateful always for all the work that COBAC members do, the contribution, the time, um, and, and just the dedication to increasing accessibility in our community. So well-deserved break and I hope that it is, um, enjoyable. So Liz, with that, I turn it back to you.
All right. This is Liz Woodburn. Thank you so much, Cassandra. We appreciate that. And appreciate you for sharing all those amazing resources for us to connect to. Um, I'd like to move the agenda forward with, um, item eight on our agenda, which is Community Conversations, um, Fares and Transportation. And welcome Lisa Lang from Full Access High Desert, um, to the front. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lisa and I work for Full Access High Desert as a data processing specialist. I am a daily CET writer and I know both, both from the inside and out of the real world. Um, I just want to explain full act, what Full Access High Desert does. We are a case management entity that serves over 400 individuals with developmental, intellectual and developmental disabilities. Our folks have physical disabilities such as wheelchair users, visually impaired and other wide range of support needed. Um, our role is to support their, our clients in independence and inclusion. Sorry. Um, just every person deserves, uh, the right and individual, and, sorry. They deserve, um, accessibility with our transit system, not just to be served, but to be in our community. And I just want to say, I want to explain why the transportation is so important to us. It, it's important for our clients to have access, accessibility to get to work, to the store, to appointments and social activities. Um, services used are CET, dialerite and taxi, all funded by Medicaid dollars. Currently, we have 124 clients that use taxi service in their plan. 60 of them are on a regular basis. Others will use them in emergencies or in the winter time. I just want to say, um, pre-COVID, we had 86 clients that use CET and dialerite in their plan. Transportation is very important because it links in between isolation and inclusion. Without it, independence would be impossible. What happens when services change? It's a domino effect in our system. When? Okay, um, when our case managers have to do a change, they have to meet with the client, ma- do a change form, go back out and get the client's signatures. It has to be approved by their supervisor. And then the administration has to enter into the payroll system, which is called Express. Tickets have to be ordered mid-month. Someone has to go down to Hawthorne, pick up those tickets, count them, verify and prepare invoices, mail the, address envelopes, mail them out. If we have an annual pass, they usually have to be picked up by the client in person to get their photo taken. This can all take, for one client, and with all these changes, could take four to, four to six hours per client. This is all, there's a lot of behind the scenes work to take, to make this all run smoothly. With CET hiking their prices and confu- and confusion. Well, my, our biggest question is why did the cost double? CET's prices doubled since COV, since before COVID. Biggest question is why? Why is there such an increase? Why was the increase so much? What's the difference from, from the old system? Will the tickets and passes be paper or digital? If digital, how are we gonna have a capacity to reload them in a, in a manner? And I just want to say CET rates in Central Oregon are now higher than in bigger metro areas, even though they have more frequent routes and better access. Why are the pay, why are we paying more for less? And why is the increased costs come with better access? Um, in the past, before COVID, um, we had to order the tickets, as I said, mail them out, confirm, pick up the tickets. It all takes time. Um, and if the changes that are coming, we need more clarification in communication and education, not just for us, but for those we serve. And for the taxi services, it's a complicated relationship. Convenience versus cost. Taxis door to door, often easier for clients because they can just call 24 hours in advance, say, I need to be picked up at home and go to work. And they can schedule that on a weekly basis, monthly basis, if that's all they're doing. And my biggest concern with the taxis is their insurance premiums have doubled and tripled. Um, a lot of them don't have ADA vans. We do have, we do use one, eight, or we have one or two ADA van services. But just for them to be, get picked up is, could be $90. And that's a $180 round trip plus the mileage from wherever they're going. Um, so some companies are not ADA compliant, which we probably all know that. Um, modifications are expensive, licensing, insurance barriers are heavy. My, my most concern is, um, that we're worried about the companies that may stop or, stop serving us altogether. And so what will happen to our clients if they don't have a way to get to work, to the store to get groceries? So, um, I'm just wondering, how can we support the taxi companies while encouraging ADA compliance without putting them out of business? Would the city of Bend be able to offer a grant or some funded supports to help them with their ADA vans? I just want to say, let's work together on this. Everyone in this room wants equality and accessibility. But we need solutions that if, if reflect the reality of work involved. We are, we want our clients to be independent, included, have reliable and affordable transportation. Let's not just build systems. Let's build one that actually works for the people who need the most. Who need the most. Thank you for letting me come speak today.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, thank you, Lisa, for your presentation. Um, do any COBAC members have any questions or comments about what Lisa just shared?
This is Amanda. I'm, need some help remembering what, when is, when are these? Does the transportation increase go or happen already? Or when is it happening?
It's, um, projected, uh, for the fall.
Okay.
For them to increase.
Buses are still free at the moment, but in the fall, it's changing.
Okay. And how much is it going up?
Going from $0 to $2 a ride. And also you can't transfer between buses, but there's a maximum of $6 that you would pay for the day, I believe.
And we find this on CET's website?
Yes. Yes, you can. Um, and I can, um, I can share with Cassandra that can disseminate, um, fair information. Um, Lisa and I actually pulled, um, this is Liz Woodburn, by the way. Um, Lisa and I pulled, uh, fares, uh, for annual passes for the metropolitan area of Portland and, um, Lane County to compare them against the projected prices for CET that are coming in the fall. And, um, while Portland is slightly more, it's $50 more than what it would be in our area. They also offer how many lines?
They have like seven, 79 lines that serve the metropolitan area. So that would be going all the way out to Gresham, Sandy, and then all the way out to like Hillsborough, all the way to Clackamas and into Vancouver, into Washington. So they serve a lot more area.
With more frequency.
More frequency, more buses, more, just, yeah.
Yeah. And so I think the concern with the fares, um, with CET is, um, even at the reduced rate, uh, for people with annual plans, it's still slightly elevated without much more benefit than pre-COVID. So the, the question is, is, um, where, where are they getting that price estimate? And how are they justifying it in terms of actual, um, service delivered? If that makes sense.
That's a great question. That's been asked of them and they've been unable to answer. They've also been unable to answer how much implementing a fare system is going to cost to install and to manage. I've also heard that they are not going to accept cash payments. And how many ticket kiosks are there going to be? We don't know. There might be one at Hawthorne Station. Um, there is a lot that we don't know.
This is, oh, oh, go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry. This is Stephanie. Is part of their, their, you know, no cash payment and currently they're, um, woefully short of ticket kiosks? Is, is that why, are they pushing the use of the app then to purchase ticketing? Um, as to kind of help prevent that bottleneck for, like, how do I actually get a, a ticket, a digital ticket or, or a paper ticket or whatever if the buses aren't taking cash? Is that, is that their goal? Is it, all of this is done through their app? I know Derek's not here today.
I don't know if their app supports, um, RFID payment. Um, I know for other municipalities, you use something like Google Wallet. Um, you can log into an account there. Um, but yeah, I believe part of that reason is because cashes are to deal with. You have to hire people to count it. At the end of the day, puts people at risk when you're storing cash on buses. So they're trying to go all digital, but you know, not everybody has a smartphone, so.
This is Liz Woodburn here again. Um, I think that there are a lot of questions, um, to be answered. Uh, and I'm not going to speak for Derek. He's not here today. But it, it seems like they, CET is still trying to figure out, um, what systems they're using and what it's gonna look like. And, um, yeah, I, I guess my question to COBAC is, what can we do as, um, an advisory council, um, to support the work? And also to, um, make voices like Lisa's and those who are supported at Full Access High Desert, um, feel like that they're being heard and that, that, um, a vital service like transportation, um, remains affordable and accessible to them.
This is Amanda. I think, I'm thinking a couple of things. One, if we could get Derek's ear and, and be like, have some representation at a meeting that CET had. I mean, I don't really know how their meetings go. Do they have public, like, open meetings for the public to come and, um, address concerns? Um, we could write a letter, which I think is, is great, but also doesn't, there's not like a hard result of that. Like, it's just our voice being out there, but whether or not they're heard and what happens with that, we don't ever know the result of that. Like, we wrote a letter to the taxi, right? Didn't we do that earlier in the year, Carl? Or, and what happened with that?
Oh, we're about to get an update on that in like five minutes. So.
Okay, cool. So, uh, I guess there's, there's a couple of things. And they both involve checking in with Derek, probably. Yeah.
Um, if people are interested, I know that the July's meeting has been canceled, but CET is run by the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, which usually holds monthly meetings. They tend to cancel them enough that they meet about six times a year. Um, but that's generally where you can find presentations from their head, uh, Bob Townsend, who runs CET now, used to be with ODOT and worked with Ariel on the MPO. Um, and there you can potentially ask questions. So if I were anyone watching and interested in providing input, I would go to the COIC website and email Tammy Bayney, who is the director there, and voice your displeasure.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Um, I think transportation is just, um, such a, um, a vital service and also a hot button topic here, um, with our advisory committee. And, um, I want to just encourage all of us to continue, continue pushing forward because, um, without that service, as Lisa said, uh, a lot of the people who are supported by the county or by Full Access, um, literally would be isolated. Um, and that is a cause that I want to champion, that we continue fighting for access and affordability, um, for such services. Um, I want to touch on, um, the second portion of, uh, what you shared, Lisa, and that was about the taxi companies. We did write a letter, um, uh, to, um, investigate and learn more about licensing and, uh, ADA compliance in terms of having, um, vehicles that are, uh, wheelchair accessible. And we will hear more from city staff in a minute. Um, but I just want to highlight the fact that, um, also without taxi service for the folks that have served the county, um, and Full Access, um, without those, um, services. And we've lost a handful of, uh, taxi companies in the recent past, uh, due to various circumstances. One in particular that they, um, retired and they couldn't afford to continue having staff. Um, all that to say that, um, fares for taxis have risen considerably. And folks who are on Medicaid and, um, pay for those services through their plan have a limited amount. So we are capped at $600.
I, this is Lisa. I did, I forgot to look. It's, okay, it's, I want to say $650 or $710. It's something like that. But that's considering not just the taxi. It would include the bus now that, that we're running me fares for the buses. Their PSWs, if they have any, and any agency rides they need through their agency that they work with.
So that's mileage through a provider, support, taxi and CET service that is all rolled into one bundle. And so And so when we're talking about individuals who use transportation services that are, eh, have a very limited. Finite, uh. Income that they can use. It's not really an income, but like a budget, a pool of money. Um, it's really concerning when the providers of that services are increasing their rates. So that impacts our people. And then any other, um, auxiliary. Uh, costs that a provider might have. So that's insurance, that's licensing. Um, that's fines or fees if they're not ADA compliant. So, um, I just wanted to put that out and recapture those points before we move on to. The next segment, um, and how we can work collaboratively together to make sure that we're not being punitive. But being educational and, um, inclusive of this vital service that taxi companies provide. Cassandra?
Thanks, Lisa. This is Cassandra. Um, to COBAC members, it sounds like there are a lot of questions. Um, kind of circulating insofar as, um, questions for CET. Um, and I, I don't think it's necessarily. Uh, I'm trying to be deferential to not, uh, lay all the questions at Derek's, um, feet, but just to say. Potentially if COBAC was interested, I think accumulating the questions. Um, and sharing them with our city manager Eric King potentially to share out with CET. Um, whether that's Bob, uh, Townsend or someone else, a representative from COIC. Just to talk about the disproportionate impact on our, um, individuals with disabilities in our community that this potential fare hike may have. That might be a way forward if, um, folks are interested in, in kind of accumulating that list of questions. Um, and their concerns, which, uh, Lisa, thank you so much for joining us today to share those, um, and being a great representative of Full Access High Desert. So. Um, if COBAC members are interested, I think that's a route that is available to you all that I, uh, I defer to you.
Oh, yeah. This is John Halen. I would love to come up with a list of questions. And if possible, I would like to send those questions to CET ahead of time so that when they come to answer those questions, they can show us their evidence. For making the decision as they did for the questions that we have.
Counselor Mendez?
Hi, everyone. Uh, this is Counselor Ariel Mendez and, um, I just wanted to say real quick that the. COIC board is the board that approves the fair changes and they did do that in June at their last meeting. Their next meeting would be normally next week on July third, but that meeting has been canceled. Uh, but that is the body that has ultimate decision-making authority over those fairs. I saw the. Previous draft proposal, which is as has been described, and I think there are lots of questions about this. So I would say, I think that Cascade's Transit is doing their best to explain the rationale behind this. And the, the ultimate goal is to provide better service, uh, and increase ridership and make it a, a better service, a system that serves everyone. So to that end, I do think that they're still interested in getting feedback and in this implementation phase, staying engaged and involved is going to be really important. I do think that they're looking for that feedback. They've have had some outreach events. Um, I think they're open to it. I've written them an email. Uh, just now because they, I could not find the, uh, proposed fair schedule on their website, so. I know where to find it because it's buried in the meeting minutes of previous presentations and things like that, but I would like to see them, um, be a little bit more. Um, forthright and providing that information. So, um. Yeah, please do, I think, send, send them an email. It's too bad that Derek, who works for Cascade's Transit isn't here today. I think he would probably be well positioned to answer a lot of these questions, but, um. Emailing Cascade's Transit and the, uh, the individual board members at COIC. Um, it was passed unanimously and they did have some discussion about it, uh, including about whether to extend public comment period. Uh, our representative for the City of Bend is Counselor Mike Riley, and so he might be another person to reach out to, um, for information or questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ariel.
This is Liz Woodfin. I think with that information, um, Cassandra, um, could you offer us some guidance on? Uh, whether we should make a motion to, um. Have a list of questions that we present to COIC.
Absolutely. Thanks, Liz. I think that you could, uh, make a motion if you'd like, um, to, um, present a list of questions. Um, as COBAC reports to the city manager, um, with direction and requests of the city manager. Forward your questions and concerns, not only to Counselor Riley, um, thank you, Counselor Mendez for sharing that, but also to, uh, COIC. Um, as a position that the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, uh, takes.
Trying to get all that down and.
Not, not succinct. My apologies. I think a motion to draft, uh, a letter, uh, containing questions for COIC. COIC, um, by COBAC is sufficient.
Okay. So with that, um, this is Liz Woodfin. Oh, sorry. Did we have another question?
Uh, no, go ahead. No, this is Liz. You have a Liz. Go ahead.
Alright, this is Liz Woodfin. Um, I motion that COBAC, um, comes together and writes. A letter with questions, um, contained, um, directed to COIC. I'm, I'm not saying this correctly, uh, so apologies, uh.
Liz, may I interrupt? I'm so sorry. I'm just thinking also of the timeline that, um, Counselor Mendez has provided for us and knowing that we are out of. Um, July and, uh, and obviously this is timely. Um, would the list of questions that we have, um, discussed today? Be sufficient for me to summarize, um, in a memo, um, to City Manager King? Um, and that would be representative, uh, on behalf of COBAC. So it would be a little less formal than a letter from COBAC. Um, but I would be able to summarize the concerns that have risen today and the questions that have been brought up and I can look to our transcript. Um, from the meeting if that would be satisfactory to the group, uh, rather than having to wait potentially until, um, August to be able to, um. Confirm the letter and pass that unanimously.
This is Liz Woodfin. I, I like that plan much better, um, but I will defer to, um, COBAC members. Uh, to decide that. Um. So I'll, I'll make a motion, um, for Cassandra to be the conduit. Uh, with the questions from the presentation to submit to, um. Eric King, City Manager.
Um, if I may, uh, this is John Halen online. If I may, since we're gonna go off of questions that were only brought up at this meeting, are there any other questions that people might have for CET? Or for COIC, uh, in that case? Uh, it, for me, it's. Why are we adding fares but not increasing bus frequency? Why are we adding more routes and not increasing bus frequency? If buses ran every fifteen minutes, that's the golden number for public transit. More people would use it. So I don't understand why this is all happening. Um, also. Are people with cash only allowed to ride the bus? Where are they gonna have to go to get tickets? Um, there's just, there's a lot and it's all rather. Uh, sad that this is happening. It's a, it's a huge. Huge disservice to our community, um, to, to kind of spring this on us and. I don't know what the fares are supposed to make up. I think the amount of money they're expecting is a, a fraction of the total budget. And all we're doing is hurting the people that use the bus most, which are generally lower income people. Um, you're not gonna see a guy in a Beamer riding the bus. So I just, I just don't know why we're, we're taxing. The poor to use a system that is the only system they have. Uh, Bend is built around car infrastructure and the fact that they can't. Get around in cars and are stuck with the bus and now they're having to pay for this is. It's, uh. It's morally, it's morally wrong.
Um, this is Stephanie. If I could just add to the list of questions, um. Would there be a, um, application for a fee reduction or a grant for a free permit? Or a bus pass, uh, for qualifying individuals? So if they do that, while it puts a lot of burden on the actual individual, it could. Maintain a level of, uh, ridership for that person if they ride for a low cost or, or free.
So this is Liz Woodfin, um, and that's a great question. Um. They, on the projected fares, as far as I'm aware, they do have, um. Those who are eligible, so who ha- have Medicaid, who meet, um, certain income requirements. Um, students will have a reduced fare. Unfortunately, that reduced fare is still. Exponentially more than it was pre-COVID. Um, and another, another element of that is those who use Dial-A-Ride have to submit. An application that is incredibly invasive, as far as I'm concerned, um. In order to use Dial-A-Ride services. So I guess that that would be another question too, um, and how they can adjust that, but different than from the fair. Um, conversation, um, uh, Counselor Mendez, uh, had some comments.
Once.
Yeah, sorry. I know that word.
Sorry. Was it Bob Townsend from CET is on, um, online right now as an attendee? And it's up to you whether you'd like to let him speak or not.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think, I was just gonna say, I, he's actually emailed me back and.
Okay.
Has some more information to share. I would say, welcome and it, and it would be.
I. Carl, I want to make sure that we have time for our other speaker as well.
Yeah. Um. I also don't want to pass up this opportunity to have, uh, an open conversation. Can we put a, um. If we open, um, the conversation, Cassandra, could we put like a timeframe of, um. Maybe like six minutes?
Absolutely. I think Liz, we are ahead of schedule, so that should still allow time for Ariel to give her presentation. So I will, um. I will, with that, if, if it's okay with you, Liz, I will, uh, allow, um, Bob to join us and chat.
Bob?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Okay, um. This is Bob Townsend. I'm Cascade's Transit Director. I don't think I have, well, I have camera capabilities, but it's not letting me choose. Um, but voice is fine. Um, I apologize for not, um, or Derek's out this week and we. Uh, had a little confusion on coverage, but certainly I, I've been listening the last couple of minutes since Counselor Mendez, um. Emailed me about the information. It is on our website. We have it posted in one spot. We'll add it in another posting. It is a little confusing. Um, it just pops up on my tab, so I, I didn't see that. I apologize for that, but. Uh, I'm ha- happy to answer questions. I, I just want to note that nothing is approved yet. We've sent out draft stuff because it is new and it's been five years. And so we had the board review a draft, uh, fare policy that includes reductions, who gets reductions, what information they have to. Uh, provide to get that reduction, what the fare rates are and all that information. And the board won't be voting on it until August seventh. So we've been. I've been at city council, Redmond Bend, county commission meetings, just doing as much outreach as we can in addition to county by county or. Our transit, uh, advisory committee meetings going over it, just getting as much, uh, feedback as we can and certainly. Can answer any of the questions that you were kinda, or that I heard the last bit of there, uh, when I joined.
This is Liz Woodfin. Thank you, Bob, um, for coming. Uh, we have a, just a short amount of time, um, for us to kind of chat with you. Um, and we appreciate you being here. Um. COBAC members, um. Please feel free to ask questions of Bob, um.
Yeah, this is John Halen. Um, my questions are, why aren't we pushing to increase frequency of current routes? Um, what are people supposed to do if they only have cash? And, um. How much is implementation of the fare system going to cost CET?
Yeah, so, um, let's go in order. We, we don't have enough funding to expand to fifteen-minute service in Bend. If the payroll tax increase that's proposed in the. Latest transportation package that actually came out this morning and is in hearing here in an hour or so to get voted on. If that goes up to three tenths and now it's not immediately, it's over about a five-year window, but if that is approved, then we will be able to move to fifteen minutes. In Bend at some point in the next two or three years. We can't afford to right now. That's double the drivers that we have right now. It's a substantial. Uh, investment. Um, let me see. To your next question about cash, so we will not accept cash on the bus. We will have cash machines available at certain locations like Hawthorne, Redmond and things like that. The reality though is if we have someone who can't access their phone, doesn't have a transit pass through, you know. A provider service that will be, you know, that will have partnerships with Shepherd's House, Bethlehem and all of these to have their own passes. If for some reason someone doesn't have cash, we'll still allow them to ride the bus one time to Hawthorne. Or to, you know, which is everywhere you're going in Bend, right? You have to go through Hawthorne. And then from there, they won't be able to get back on the bus unless they have, um, bought a fare or things like that. So it's not gonna be absolute. Those. Those issues are the same ones that TriMed and others deal, deal with too and are able to manage it. And certainly we're not gonna be. You know, so black and white is to not allow people, but it, it really is a safety issue. It's a. It's an accessibility issue. If you rode the bus before when it was here, how do you get your discounts? We looked, the bus driver looked at you to see if you made, met an age requirement, looked at you to see if you met a disability requirement versus having. Something that can be done behind the scenes so that none of your information is shared and made public. And so there, there's a lot of factors. And in this limited time, it's hard to talk about all of them, but just to know, as a nation goes, there's only a handful of transit agencies that do not charge fares. And those are all fully subsidized. We are not subsidized at all. Uh, we're one of the only ones in Oregon that don't have a pay or tax. Um, property tax basis, so we have to rely on funds to, to perform. And then the last question is implementation, generally implementation. And we're, we have a contract out right now that we're reviewing and finalizing, but it's gonna be about twenty percent of the expected revenue. Um, each year, and then that goes down over time once you have all the services in place.
This is Liz Woodfin. Thank you, Bob. Um, we have about, um, thirty seconds left, um. Uh, for segment.
This is, this is Liz Deeth Martin online. Um, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Ariel, for getting Bob on the. You know, on the line there. That's, this is terrific to actually get some answers. My question is, what can we do to help?
Yeah, I think the thing right now, oh, I appreciate that. And just know in the limited time, I'm happy to go over these or meet individually. This is unique, right? And it is a little bit different, but thi- this will go a long ways to actually improving our services, making it safer and things like that. The things that I want people to understand right now is the fares are one thing, two dollars for normal route, a dollar reduced. Um, three dollars max rate. That's actually less than what it ever was before. So this. This idea that we're actually more, yeah, maybe the individual route here or there is more than it was, but the daily rate for a reduced is far less. Now that may change over time, but, but so it's really getting the word out about reductions, right? We, we think seventy-five percent of our people right now would qualify for reduced rates, right? Which is fine. We hope that number changes. And that we go to more commuter-based system where it may not be as many reduced rates, but it's really getting the word out to. Agencies, entities, we're really anything, a business that has ten or more, any nonprofits, the list is very long. If you look through the guidelines on who we're willing to partner with to get reduced service. It's really about how do we increase ridership and things like that versus, oh, do we need to make a dollar here, a dollar there, right? Yes, it is nice to have identification, whether it's via number, uh, a name, if you want to submit your information. So that we can be more safe and make sure that people who don't. Deserve the opportunity to ride the bus anymore because they've violated rules, aren't getting on the bus. That's one of the main things now is we've allowed people who have been suspended. Who have had legal action taken against them for riding or, you know, violations on the bus, yet we can't control them getting on. we can't control them getting on and off because we have too many services. And so it is a big safety thing, but what you can do is spread the word that, hey, contact me. I'm happy to work through business partnerships. You know, we're working through the college, schools. Whatever we can, it's really about growing the system. It's, yes, the revenue is nice. It's probably four or five more routes. Um estimated that we can have with the revenue, but at the same time, it's really about increasing ridership over the long haul.
This is Liz Woodfin. Thank you again, Bob. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Counselor Mendez, for um inviting Bob to to pop in impromptu. I'm gonna go ahead and close this section. Um again, appreciative uh of your feedback and we will connect with Cassandra to connect back with you, Bob. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and move on um to vehicles for hire, operating licenses with Ariel V, Licensing Manager, City of Bend, um Community Development Department, and Julie DeVoe, Program Coordinator, Community Development. I don't know if Julie is still um online with us. Okay, great. Um welcome, both of you. Thank you for your patience. Um take the floor.
Yes, thank you so much for having me today. My name is Ariel V. I'm the Licensing Manager at the City of Bend. I go by she/her. I'm a white woman with medium brown hair and a black dress on today. Um I am hoping that I can share my screen because the PowerPoint presentation has been evolving. Is that okay? It says you cannot start screen sharing while the other participant is sharing. Oh, thank you so much.
All you, Ariel.
There we go. Alright, so I am the Licensing Manager in the Community Development Department. We license vehicles for hire. Um what does that mean? What is a vehicle for hire? Who do we license? So any vehicle that carries passengers for money, that includes taxis, as we traditionally think of them, rideshare cars, those are Uber and Lyft, animal-drawn vehicles, which we currently don't have in Bend, and pedicabs, which I think we do have one pedicab here in Bend. What does not need a li- who does not need a license? So school buses that transport students do not need a license. Vehicles used by nonprofit transportation providers solely for elderly or handicapped persons do not need a license. Vehicles used to provide courtesy transportation at no charge to and from parking lots, hotels, rental offices, and retirement homes do not need a license, as well as ambulance um service. So how do you obtain a license if you fall into that category that needs one, which is mostly taxis and Uber and Lyft? You have to have a business registration, which you get with us. You need to send us a photo of the vehicle identification. You also have to be registered with the Secretary of State as a business. You need to sign an acknowledgement form. There is an insurance requirement. I think that the aggregate amount of insurance that you need to have is like two million dollars and one million dollars per incident. And then you have to pay fees. If you're a, if you're Uber or Lyft, you have to pay two thousand three hundred dollars. If you're not Uber or Lyft or a new evolution of the rideshare business, you have to pay six hundred dollars for your license. How often? Annually. And so who do we, who is licensed in Bend? So we currently have twelve licensed vehicles for hire. We have two transportation networks, that's Uber and Lyft. We have one golf cart that was recently created, this Cruzees, that's gonna bring people downtown. Um we have one human-powered, which is that brewery bicycle thing. We have six local taxi companies. We have the Yellow Brew Bus, and then there's S K, S K Travels, which is just one person and one car and kind of different than the rest of these. And then I've included on the right here a list of the names of the companies. And I did reach out to companies because um in response to your letter, I wanted to find out from them what they do offer and what their barriers are to offering more. I was only able to get ahold of, I think it was Taxis of Bend and um it was the Town Car one, Sun River Town Car. So ca- um Taxis of Bend, and I believe it was that one, they only have Priuses. They would love to provide um access to wheelchair, peoples in wheelchairs, but they can't afford a van and they're concerned about the price of the gas with the van. And they would love it if the City of Bend would help them financially buy a van, but then she talked about it more and she's like, even the cost of gas is a barrier. Um and then I talked to um the Town Car Company, and I asked, and they do at times um are able to accommodate people with disabilities, even a wheelchair, but somebody who's like not able to walk. They don't feel comfortable transporting that person or transferring that person. So they said that they refer that person to like a medical transport company, which they said could give them a ride, not just to a medical appointment, but to the airport or Tower Theater or somewhere else. Um and so when they're not able to provide that service, that is where they refer people. Um and that is really all that I have today. So licensing is a repository for information. We keep data on who is licensed, and we're really a facilitator in every way. Like, we get a license and we send it to fire for approval, and we send it to risk management for approval, and we send it to um Cassandra for approval, but and we're just the contact person. And so that is how I see licensing can help in this situation, is that we know who is licensed in these categories. And we can pass on information that you want shared with them or resources that might be available that they don't know about. Um and so that is where I see that my division can help. And I'm looking for feedback from COBAC on how we could help in that way, or if you wanna see other things. I'm happy to hear that, too.
Thanks, Ariel, for being here. Um I'm, my name's Carl. I'm, I'm the one who has sort of taken the lead on this issue because it's um, it's affected me personally. I uh, I use a manual wheelchair and I'm able to use um taxis, Uber, Lyft cars without any adaptations. But um a couple of years ago, I broke my collarbone. I had to use a power chair for a couple of weeks, and it really opened up my eyes to uh how inaccessible our, you know, our city's uh vehicle for hire network is. Right? I I wanted to get to the airport. I knew that I would be able to fly with my power chair, but it turns out that I wasn't able to get someone just to bring me to the airport. And as you say, there are some uh companies in the medical transit field that will possibly give you a ride to somewhere like the airport, but one, it's going to cost you many times more than the cost of a taxi and and two, you have to schedule that way in advance, and it might uh not even be possible to get one on a weekend or an evening time or many other times that people might need a taxi. Anyway, um my question for you is, I I hope this doesn't come off as too confrontational, but why can't we, as a city, refuse to issue licenses to companies that don't comply with ADA?
So the City of Bend cannot enforce the ADA. The ADA is enforced by the federal government, primarily the US Department of Justice. So I think that this is more of a legal issue that we could invite a city attorney to discuss because I am not an expert in ADA law, but I think that that is where that question goes to, is like, who has the enforcement power? What is a reasonable accommodation? Because like one question I have is like Uber and Lyft, do they have to have one car that that has a lift for wheelchairs, but that person's not driving all the time? Like, how, what is the expectation even? I have questions about.
Yeah, it is for sure more more complicated with the TNCs. I've looked into that as well and decided like maybe in a couple of years, we deal with that, right? But for taxis, the ADA does have pretty clear requirements. And I I I I take your point about you not being sort of an agency that enforces laws, but I mean, I I I have to assume that you wouldn't grant a license to a Taxi Cat com- company whose, none of their vehicles are registered. You know, they don't have license plates, right? So there there have to be some basic requirements, legal requirements that are met in order for a life. And in fact, you know, I've been on the city's license, licensing department's website and it had looked in Bend City Code and can't remember the specific language, but it essentially says you have to be in compliance with all applicable laws in order to get a license. But it seems like, in fact, that's not true. You can be out of compliance with a federal law and still get a taxi license in the City of Bend, which is which it doesn't seem right to me.
And I am also concerned about this and um hearing Lisa speak about like, you know, it's isolation or transportation that really connects with me. So to be approved for a license, these are the things up on the screen that you need to provide. It's, it's not a lot that you need to do and you have to pay a fee. The city can suspend, revoke licenses. That was more of a code enforcement thing. Um this, what licensing does, and we found effective, is educating um businesses about their requirements, about their resources. One concern that I have that I think Lisa mentioned is we don't want to put taxi businesses out of business because they help our population in general and they help people who have accessibility issues. Um and so, and these businesses from the two that I talked to, they want, they aspire to be able to provide this service. Um they just don't know how, you know, to do it, so.
Yeah, I, let me just express my frustration that, you know, we Cassandra mentioned this is the thirty-fifth anniversary of the of the ADA. Why are we just getting around to talking about this thirty-five years after the relevant law was passed? It just seems crazy to me, but that, that rant aside, um I agree, we need to, we need to collaborate with these uh companies and be able to offer, you know, carrots as well as sticks, um I think, to get this done. It, I I've looked into it and and wheelchair-accessible vehicles don't need to cost as much as people think they need to. There are such things as um manual ramps or vans. They don't cost very much. There are all kinds of options out there, and I don't know, I, I guess I just wanna say look forward to working with your office on, on trying to solve this problem. And thank you for being here.
Yes, and absolutely. And I think that if we could share that information with businesses, they would be eager to provide that service, is what I believe would happen. Cassandra?
Carl, I just wanna thank you for sharing um that, and I don't classify that as a rant. I think it's the civil right, and it's frustrating that things take the time that they do. But with that being said, so grateful, Ariel, that you're here to have this conversation. What I've really heard is potentially there's a need to have more conversations with our, somebody, a representative from our legal department to give us a little bit more information about that, and then also the opportunity potentially to provide some of those resources, um and Ariel as being a conduit between licensing and potentially these taxi companies sharing that. So um I I'm seeing some opportunity for 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 movement and progress, um even though albeit quite slow. But thank you, Carl, for your advocacy around this.
Oh, sorry, this is Carl. I do have one more comment that I wanted to make, which is um around licensing. If I can draw a parallel, it's my understanding that businesses, at least in certain categories like restaurants and bars, um have a city uh accessibility inspection as part of their licensing process. And as you, as you pointed out, uh the ADA is not a city law, but it can still fall within a city's responsibilities, I think, to ensure that federal laws are being followed, and that's a great example of that. And so um I don't see why um we couldn't uh have a conversation with our legal department about adding one more bullet point to your list there about um demonstrating that your vehicles in your, that your company uses um either don't need to meet the ADA, because there are some instances of that, or that they are in compliance, or that you have some plan for, you know, being in compliance in the future, so.
And Carl, that's a great point. And my understanding, and I do not do building inspections code, anything like that, I'm special events and businessy things. But my understanding is that building code provides these expectations or requirements, that you need to have five feet, you need to have this distance, you need to have this slope of grade of a slope. And we do use those standards when we inspect our licensed sidewalk cafes and our our licensed um parlets, which we consider a extension of the building, and we can use those same standards to measure them. Um and so I think that if legal can give us some direction on doing an inspection, we do inspections, so. And, but we do inspections and we educate businesses, so.
That's great.
Hi, this is Liz Deetha Martin online. Uh just a, just a little brainstorming question. So Carl, you were pointing out, like, you know, with your manual wheels, wheelchair, it's not that hard to, you know, transport it. Then you get into a power chair, they're very heavy. Sometimes they include life-sustaining equipment, like oxygen and um, you know, different things. And so they can, yeah, again, they can be very heavy. Can we figure out, is, or do we know anybody who actually has a vehicle that can be used to to transport these, the, you know, these, these heavy chairs, these, um harder to transport chairs? And could we make it easier for their vehicle to be shared or registered? Um so that, again, it's like a tool library, right, John? You know, uh ma- maybe it's not making things harder, but making things easier. If if the equipment does exist somewhere, or could it exist somewhere? That's all.
Stephanie had a question.
Oh, I just, I had a comment, and I really, I I thank you, Carl, because you brought up what I I was gonna bring up. I do think that this is a good question and maybe get somebody from legal to come out because building codes include ADA compliance um requirements, and those are not enforced by the US Department of Justice. Those are enforced locally. So why there's this, there's this double standard for fee-for-hire trans- transportation companies? So maybe we can have somebody from legal bring that up, because it shouldn't, there shouldn't be a double standard.
Yeah, and this is Ariel, and I think that that is an education that we in licensing need as well.
This is Liz Woodfin. Um I would really like to see further collaboration between COBAC and and licensing. Um because I am a huge proponent, proponent of the educational piece and outreach to those providers and how we can best support them meet the goal um and the desired outcome for each one of our our taxi providers to have at least one um accessible vehicle in their fleet. And um I don't think that will happen without partnership. And so thank you, Ariel, for being here and presenting to us and following up on um this very important issue um that we have been wanting to address for quite some time. So thank you so much.
And I I just wanna mention that like with a group of licenses, that's twelve licensees, we can do more than a letter. We can have individual meetings with the business owner and Cassandra and have a conversation, you know? We're all about building relationships and um having like a back-and-forth communication with our licensees, so we're happy, and we wanna take information that you give us and be able to pass that on, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. We are at um the COBAC Council Liaison Update, so Counselor Mendez, um please share with us.
Hi, everyone. This is Counselor Ariel Mendez. Um I know that we're running short on time, so I will try to be quick. Um first, I did send there, the information about Cascade Z's transit is on their website. I couldn't find it right away, so they're gonna publish in a different place. But I've sent the link uh to uh Cassandra and Liz and uh hope that they will share it with you. We council passed the biannual budget la- at our last meeting. Uh one of the items that I wanted to draw your attention to is there was a small, but I think important, in my opinion, uh amendment made for safety programming. We uh amended our budget to reallocate eight hundred thousand dollars over the course of the biennium uh from the paving program to safety programming. And in previous years, this area had about a hundred thousand dollars a year to respond to residents' concerns about things like cut-through traffic or drivers that are speeding, going too fast for the, for the the street they're on. Uh so I'm hopeful that this will make a really big difference, and we'll be able to work with partners, including the Parks District and the School District to try to identify what kind of barriers people are experiencing and actually have a funded program to do something about that. This is in the context of the state of Oregon is undergoing its Transportation Safety Action Plan update, and since the pandemic, fatalities on our streets have increased thirty-three percent since the pandemic. Serious injuries have increased eighty-two percent. Um so in twenty twenty-three, there were five Um, so in twenty-twenty-three, there were five hundred and eighty-seven individuals killed on Oregon roads, and three thousand seven hundred and ten sustained serious injuries. And just as a reminder, a serious injury is defined as paralysis, uh crush injuries, um skull, chest, or abdominal injuries. So these are potentially debilitating kinds of injuries, and there's, I mean, it's really weird in a way that they have skyrocketed while, I mean, really skyrocketed while, you know, only fatalities have increased uh thirty-three percent. But part of my job as a city councillor is to try to make sure that these increases don't happen in Bend, and um, what that looks like in practice is we get lots of pushback from people who are drivers, who experience a safer intersection design and don't like it. They don't like that they can't turn right on red. They don't like that a turning lane has been removed. Uh, they don't like the discomfort of having to navigate a new rounded curb. So when we discuss things like whether to expand roundabouts to multiple lanes, for example, we're looking at moving up the schedule to consider expanding the bond and Reed Market Roundabout. If you have experience using these kinds of, of roundabouts, or if you have views about what the city's policy on building multiple-lane roundabouts should be, I would encourage you to email into city council, because um if, if you don't, it tends to be one particular view that we hear a lot from. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention is uh, I want to invite you to lunch with me next week, if, if you can make it. I have a spot for three or four of you to join me, and maybe some members from the Transportation Bond Oversight Committee. That will be Tuesday, July first, from eleven-thirty to one at Croutons, and if you can't make it, or if those spots fill up, uh, don't worry, because there will be other opportunities, but um I will, maybe with the help of Lisa or Cassandra, share that invitation with you. Um, and if you have suggestions for a better meeting time or a location that works better for you, send me an email, and uh, and we'll figure something out. So, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Mendez. This is Liz Woodfin. Um, let's go ahead and move on real quick um uh to agenda setting. Um, let's keep this to about no longer than two minutes, so we can um adjourn our meeting.
Amanda, to be clear, we're talking about the August one, right?
We're talking.
Yes, we're talking about August, August, yes. Thank you.
Which is later in August, so, okay. So we'll definitely need to talk about those, the events, right, in the fall. Um, Lunch and Learn, Welcoming Week, City Fest. If, yeah, City Fest will probably have already happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably just a debrief on City Fest and how that went. Yeah. Um, follow-up on letter writing, like a letter to, if we're gonna like follow up on for CET.
Or maybe um, let's see if we can get an invitation out to um City of Bend Legal.
Yep.
To come and talk about some of the issues brought up today.
Yeah, great thought.
Mm-hmm.
See if we can get someone from City Attorney's Office.
This is John. I guess I would like to see our questions for CET still sent to CET. I would like to see their responses ahead of the August meeting, if possible, and if they could have someone on site to kind of explain some of the answers, that would be great.
This is Ian. Um, we could add like a five-minute little deal. Um, we're having the grand opening celebration for Miller's Landing, it's August fifth. It'll be open to the public, like I said, in the coming days, but the grand opening celebration is August fifth, so we could do a debrief, quick debrief at the August meeting.
I like it.
Great. Encourage everyone who, who is gonna be around on the, the fifth to attend that, if you can.
Yeah. Cassandra, this is Liz Woodfin. Um, do we need to have a motion uh for a letter about the questions that were um presented today?
No, Liz, thank you. This is Cassandra. I will just, uh, I will, I will go back in the, on the record, uh, collect those um and send a letter over to our city manager, just summarizing kind of what happened today. Um, and uh, give him an update on that, and kind of uh request that we do provide those questions to CET and CUIC. Um, and potentially, John, to your point, having some kind of an invitation to have um a dialogue, and appreciative of Bob um jumping on a call, and Ariel, thank you for alerting him to that, and us having that uh impromptu uh conversation. It was a really great meeting.
This is Liz Woodfin. Would it be appropriate if um we extended an invitation to CET and CUIC formally to come and share at COBAC?
I think that could be part of what I um uh share with City Manager Eric King, um, and we are more than welcome to uh open, open up uh our agenda to um have them come present to us and provide potentially some information. I do think Bob's um clarifications on some points were helpful, um, and I will be able to share out um Ariel's uh information that he received from Bob as well. So I think that would be great, and I'm happy to do that if uh COBAC would like.
This is Liz Woodfin. Sounds good to me. Um, okay. Any other thoughts? No? Okay. Um, I'd like to adjourn um the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee today at two thirty-eight PM.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions through my channel. Bye.
Lisa, I don't know if the recording has stopped yet.
I